Welcome to another meeting of the Lorain County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorain County Community College Education Station. The Lorain County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorain County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
Authorize the Solid Waste Management District to file the 2003 Recycle Ohio Grant Application in the amount of $198,100 to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. The district will again partner with the cities of Alariah and Lorain with breakdown as follows. Alariah $56,600, Lorain $56,600, the district is $84,900 for a total of $198,100. The required match amount to be paid by the district will be $43,620 for a total grant of $241,720 and authorize the President or Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Well, I'll second for discussion purposes.
There you go, Dan.
Good morning again, Dan Vilman, Solid Waste Director, Lorain County. You have some questions, Commissioners?
Well, I think a little explanation is in order, and you and I briefly discussed this yesterday about the match money that the districts provide so that the cities of Alariah and Lorain can access this grant. So I'd like you to expound upon that, please.
Okay. Within the grant structure, there's only three entities that can apply to ODNR, that is City of Lorain, City of Alariah, and Lorain County District because of population. City of Alariah and Lorain were not participating early on in past years, and that was before my time, because I understand that the Commissioners have allowed the Solid Waste District to give the grant monies to Alariah and Lorain to allow them to participate, because at that time, and probably the same applies today, that they can't afford the match money, which is a 20 percent match, which should basically be about $11,000. So these years, we've been putting forth the match money to Lorain and Alariah so they can get the 56-6. The match money stays with us and stays with our programs. Our total match is about $43,000. Within this structure, the district, Lorain County Solid Waste, gets an 84-9. So we're putting forth with our own money, $21,000 to get the R-84-9. We are also putting together in the match, $22,000 for the two cities so they can get the 56-6. But of that total, there's $43,620. We keep that in our bank account, but it's used for educational purposes, pamphlets of that sort, okay? Educational purposes, that's what the ODNR grant's for. We administrate, and we don't totally control what the cities of Alariah and Lorain do, but we recommend what should be done with the funding, but we don't totally control it. And ODNR has the final say on whether, in fact, what transpires with the funding.
What would we do with that money if we did not supply the match money for these two cities?
Well, we might utilize-
Would we use it differently?
No, I don't think so.
Was it part of their budgeted money? Can't we use that, that we budget in our solid waste account for each community? Don't we do that already?
Commissioner Vacy raised a very interesting point with me during the week. We already, by plan, contribute $50,000 to each one of those cities' health departments. The question she raised me, and I thought that this matter was going to be tabled, quite frankly, for the next two weeks, so I didn't seek an answer immediately, was why can't they use some of that money towards their match money for these grant funds? And I have not posed that question yet, Commissioner, unfortunately. I thought we were waiting till August 15th to deal with this matter. I have been working with Mr. Vilman on it with some other additional information from this. So I guess that question can be posed to you right now, Dan. Can't they use some of that $50,000 that these cities are getting now?
Not the 50, excuse me, but what it is, is their match money. I mean, their grant money. We already give them grant money.
Right.
Is this an addition to that?
That is correct.
And if it is, then why can't they use some of the grant money that we give them?
You're talking about the closed-loop grant money, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Or it could be closed-loop grant money, or it could be the money that's provided for the health-
If you need two more weeks, I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, I guess if you withdraw your motion, I'll withdraw my second. Gives you some more time to review this matter.
That still leaves us plenty of time to make application, correct?
Yes, we have to have it in by 31st of this month.
Well, this is a switch. Usually we're in the last minute. This is good. Gave us time. Thanks, Dan.
So we're gonna hold this?
Ma'am clerk, August 15th.
Well, how about the next one? You're gonna wanna hold the table that too, since I didn't know about bringing on discuss that?
I did not have a great deal of difficulty with number 23. We haven't discussed it, though, so it's up to you, Commissioner.
Well, personally, I would like to know what that program entails. How long is this going to be? Because you've got a litter control officer on here, Dan, for $2,000.
Talking about 23 now.
Yeah, well, are we still on?
Why don't we go to 20s where you-
Do you want me to read it?
Let her read it first, and then we'll do that.
Okay, sorry about that.
Approve the filing and award to Lorain County Solid Waste Management District 2002, 2003 Take Pride Ohio Grant Application in agreement in the amount of $20,000. The district has applied for and received a litter prevention grant from ODNR, which is a follow-up to the litter summit meetings held in late 2001 and early 2002. The grant budget breakdown is as follows. Advertising 600, sign 7,434, containers 9,600, registration 366, litter officer $2,000 for a total of $20,000. The Solid Waste District is also requesting advance of $12,000 from the General Fund to the Take Pride Ohio Grant Account. These monies will be repaid to the General Fund as an advancement checks from the ODNR are received.
Sure show, Dan.
Yes. This is a product of a program that ODNR put on to inform the communities, and the whole state, actually, about litter control problems. We are one of probably only about 20 counties that have participated in this program so far. The communities that participated in the program are basically going to be the recipients of the grant dollars. There's no match involved in it. It's just a $20,000 grant from ODNR. There's no match monies involved.
The $2,000 for the litter officer, is that gonna be used to offset some of our personnel costs now, or is that gonna be additional hires?
The litter control officer that's stated in here is going to be a Vermillion police officer. That goes to Vermillion, and that's their portion of the grant.
How was that determined?
Who determined that?
We asked the communities within the process of the litter summit what they would like to do with funding. And then ODNR actually sprung on us very quickly, well, what are you gonna do with the money? And it hadn't been determined yet, so we called all the communities, all the entities that were in the process, and asked them what they would like to do. And then the Solid Waste Department, the staff, actually made the decision.
So you have 10 percent of this grant going to Vermillion?
We have $2,000 going to Vermillion for litter control enforcement.
What's that? Is that like a dare officer, but for litter? Is that the same thing? Walk around litter officer? I mean, what's that?
Well, they work on various programs. They call it litter officer. The word officer is misleading.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, you have a police officer as a litter officer?
They're probably offsetting some of their cost of one of their safety faucets right now.
That's pretty much what I was trying to figure out.
I'm assuming that's what they're doing. It's creative. That's what we would do if we needed money.
A lot of assuming today.
But I'm a little concerned with 10 percent of those funds going to Vermillion when they are a small fraction of Lorain County. Why a greater portion isn't staying with Lorain County? Do you have a complete breakdown of who's getting what on this grant, Dan?
Yes.
Would you read that to the Board?
Townships, all the townships are gonna get 40 signs, litter control signs to be put up along the road.
Forty each?
We're working with the county engineer department to make the signs and put them up.
Those are those metal ones that are permanently fixed?
Right, right.
So this goes to the county engineer for making the signs, the $7,434?
Yes. Total signs, because Sheffield Village is going to get 12 signs also. That's what they wanted.
Well, let's talk about the positive thing of this whole thing, which is containers where litter's supposed to go.
Yeah.
What's up with that? What's the 9,600 bucks worth?
Okay, City of Alariah is gonna get seven containers.
What are they, containers? Are they cement? Are they, what are they?
Most generally, they're gonna be plastic, but it could be concrete. Depends on what the cities want.
Are they for like the public sidewalks and stuff like that?
That is correct, Commissioner.
Might be a good idea.
Commissioners, why don't we do this on the 15th along with number 22, and then we'll get you a packet of information that explains this with specificity.
Do you have till August 31st on this one also? How much time do you have for this grant?
No, we've already received the grant.
Oh, you have?
We've already received the grant.
Doesn't the Sheriff's Department have a litter control officer?
I think we should.
I'm sure he does.
The Sheriff's Department did participate in the program.
But the Solid Waste Department made the decision for us, so I'd like to review that.
Are we getting any reimbursement for the funding that we gave the county engineer for our litter control, summer litter control program? Did we seek any reimbursement on that from this grant?
No, we didn't.
Okay, well, we put about, what, $17,000 or $18,000 into that program this year?
About 16-something. That's what we've been doing in the past years, so.
And we do that, and then just in the townships with the county engineers, is that?
Right. We're working on a program right now with the Sheriff's Department that would let us do litter control through the Sheriff's Department using prisoners 365 days a year. But I haven't, we haven't got that formally done.
Yeah, we've tackled that over the last five or six years, every time it comes down to the liability issues, so be interested to see how you work that out.
Sheriff Stomini and myself and one of his reps have been talking about it for the last six months, so.
I got the music, you know, working on the chain gang. Okay?
Mr. Chairman.
For taste. You move to hold?
I move to hold item number 23 until August 15th.
Sounds good to me. Just a second. I don't think it sounds good to the motion.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll see you again then on the 15th, Dan, if not before. I said we'll see you again on the 15th, if not before.
Approve an enterance purchase service contract between the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the Workforce Development Agency and Neighborhood House Association of Lorain County Incorporated, Lorain, Ohio, for the operation of the Youth at Work Program in the amount of $156,651. This contract is effective August 5, 2002, through June 30, 2003, and the funding source is available through the Workforce Investment Act.
So moved.
I'll second.
And I'd like to say it's nice to see contracts coming up before they do, instead of being retroactive. Just want to commend your staff on that, so.
I think that's positive.
Oh, that was a good response.
Thank you. I know where he was heading, that's why I was gonna-
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Do we have to read all this annexation?
Thank you, Mrs. Facey.
I think we should, but that's just me.
Well, you can go ahead and listen to it. We'll just walk away and then come back.
I'm kidding.
Is there any part of it, we have any questions? Okay, then I'll ask one. Section 1.2, Jerry.
Do you want me to just read the first part?
Yes, please. The first two sentences, that would be helpful. Then we'll know the subject, anyway.
Establishing deposit and fee regulations for costs incurred in annexation proceedings pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 709.032B as enacted by Senate Bill 5.
Commissioners, before you go further, I know you don't want to sit through this reading, but we're televised, and for the sake of the public, they may not know what you're talking about here if this doesn't get read.
On that, you're gonna know what we're talking about after you get done reading it. The subject has just been defined.
Okay.
I think we can discuss it, but-
If anybody would like a copy, they can just-
And Jerry can give a brief overview of why we're looking at this, because he hasn't had a chance to talk this morning, you know? He likes, it's TV time, too. Sorry.
Loudly, please.
We have an interactive audience.
Sorry, Jerry.
What do you think the best way to proceed on this is?
I can briefly summarize what this is about.
Okay.
The new annexation law, which the general consensus is now in effect, requires that different procedures be adopted by the Board of Commissioners. Among these include things like getting a deposit for covering the costs of the proceeding. Parties have the right to ask for court reporters and that the counties supply those court reporters, as opposed to now we have people bring their own in, and that's a cost that we can ask for a procedure. Since there's an expedited procedure, we no longer have time to come back in and have the Board establish the date for publishing the notices and setting up the hearings. So this provides for an expedited procedure whereby the clerk of courts can just go ahead and do that. I'm sorry, the clerk of the Commissioners can go ahead and do that on their own. And there are a number of other procedural things that are provided in here for the issuing of subpoenas, there are requirements that the clerk documents and keep a record of the proceedings and the fees that, excuse me, are charged, and that's basically what this is about, implementing the new law.
Do you think it's appropriate not to read it? I would think that- You should be writing the public record since it's legislative. It's an issue we're passing.
It's not obligated that you read it.
Oh, it's not obligated, so we're not obligated?
It's not an obligation.
And we do have a draft, and there's been several drafts, and I think we've all looked at. Each of us has made suggestions, and I think, I did a little proofreading yesterday, and I think that those suggestions have been put into the document. And I think that, I thought, and I asked the clerk to bring this forward, because I think it's appropriate for us to have something in place now as we proceed down the line, so. Did you have some questions specifically?
Yes, I had questions before we did the draft, but those were taken care of. But Jerry, my question is on section 1.2, the $250 for a court reporter. I still don't think that's enough money for a court reporter, but I know we can take it out of the deposit, which is $500, so.
Well, it just, you understand, there's an initial deposit which covers the general expenses of proceeding. Then there is a second deposit that what you're talking about is if we have to bring in a court reporter to take a transcript of the proceedings. I contacted our local court reporters, and I'm assuming that the Commissioners would probably want to hire local people. They both charge $45 an hour. So we're talking, that's gonna cover us five to six hours. Is it possible that it'll go over that? Yes, but, you know, again-
Then we could take it out of the $500.
Right. Now, if they then in turn want that to be transcribed, obviously that gets to be a major expense. What we would do at that time is ask the person who took the record, give us an estimate as to how much it will cost, and then at that time, they have to make an additional.
All right, and most people that are gonna want a court reporter, they usually bring their own. This is if they request it through us. They're still capable of bringing their own, correct?
That's correct.
So they normally have an arrangement, and mostly it's the petitioner's side that usually wants that, so this is probably an issue where it won't come up.
Right.
Any other questions?
No, but I do believe, for the sake of the public, we should explain that there's five different annexations now. There's not just one. There's a regular annexation, expedited type 1 annexation, expedited type 2 annexation, expedited type 3 annexation, annexation by petition of the municipality for municipal county or state-owned land, or provisions of Senate, those are the provisions of the Senate Bill 5.
I, I'm sorry, we can make this available on our website if you'd like.
Take your shot.
Yes, we could. Good idea.
Okay, so we'll make arrangements to have this posted on the website for if anybody has any desire to see this material. That'll be on lorcy.org, so we'll have it posted this week.
I think that's important, because it's not as easy anymore to get an annexation as it was in the past.
And I think that's probably the biggest benefit of the whole thing.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of item number 25. Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Facey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Jerry, won't we need resolution to create a special revenue fund for this? Can we, should we do that now?
I think that's-
Is that part? I didn't see.
Part of the resolution.
I did put a note on there that when it's adopted, we should let the Budget Department know so that he would be able to establish that with the auditor. It says on 3.0, deposits of revenue, fee revenue, it says that it will be put into a special revenue fund. I just think it's a matter of letting the auditor know that in fact this has occurred.
Well, we need approval from the state auditor, John.
Not from the county auditor, but understand you were permitted to do this, so the Ohio statute will permit setting up that fund.
So you're gonna take care of it?
Yes.
Okay, then it's already taken care of in this resolution, is that your-
If the order, if something's lacking, the order needs, we'll do a housekeeping on it.
I'll work with Mr. Stewart on that in setting that up, but it is authorized by statute.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Cortez, County Administrator?
Mr. Rokasie has an issue before I proceed. Good morning, John Rokasie, County Budget Director. Very briefly, I guess we could classify this request as a housekeeping measure. Our county treasurer's requested a warrant be issued for $35,052.20. This warrant is internal in nature, meaning that it will move monies from one fund in the county to another fund with the objective of closing out and reconciling the treasurer's books. There is no cost to the General Fund and to the county. The project in question, related to this project, is the present administration building and parking deck, which incidentally was paid off last year. That's the 25-year bond that we had on this building. Briefly, the treasurer has written to the Board of Commissioners and me, which explains the situation, and I don't want to be the subject to death, but in this letter from Mr. Tellerick to the board and myself and the administrator, Mr. Tellerick says, and this is the gist of the letter, "The proper accounting procedure established by Commissioners' resolution 25 years ago mandates that an auditor's warrant in the amount of $35,052.20 be issued. This action is required to close out Peachtree Fund Number 013 and reduce the Bond Retirement Fund. Again, it's an internal transfer of money, it's not to a vendor. If you have any questions, please contact me. As the Budget Director, then, I would therefore respectfully request of the Board that they approve the $35,052.20 from the General Obligation Bond Retirement Fund made payable to the Lorain County Treasurer, Mr. Daniel J. Tellerick."
Does that then go into the general fund then?
No, it's strictly a reconciling item in the Peachtree system that Mr. Tellerick has possession of, called Peachtree 013, so it's an internal transfer.
Commissioner, I think the question was, we're moving it from the Bond Retirement Fund into the General Fund, correct?
It's not specified for, it's actually internal, the warrant itself actually reduces the cash balance, not to any one fund, Jim. It's an overall reduction of balances, so it cannot be specified to a specific fund. It is issued from the Bond Retirement Fund, that will reduce it. When Mr. Tellerick will receive this check, he will reduce his overall cash balance to reconcile for this Bond Retirement item and for the building.
I think the name of the fund is real interesting, Peachtree Fund.
That's a software.
Well, actually, Peachtree's accounting software.
Yeah.
Accounting software. This is 25 years ago. Didn't it have a name 25 years ago?
Mr. Peachtree, that's all.
Oh, okay.
The Peachtree's actually kind of modern accounting software.
Oh, no, I thought that they gave this this name 25 years ago.
What do you have? You have a check coming for $35,000 from the Bond Retirement Fund?
That's correct.
And it's made out to the treasurer, and he's gonna deposit it in?
Use that particular warrant to draw down a balance on his books.
On his books?
Correct, on his cash balances. It's an internal, again, Commissioner, it's an internal movement within the county. I'm not, you know, it's a system, but it doesn't-
But his books are General Fund books, right?
Yes.
Because we're trying to find out who's spending the $35,000 once we get it. That's the question at hand.
Well, it won't be spent. It's a good question, Commissioner, it won't be spent. It's a vehicle, the warrant itself becomes a vehicle for Mr. Tellerick, once he internally cashes this check, to draw down that balance that he has on his-
But he has to go somewhere.
No, you're saying when you're drawing down, when you're saying drawing down, you're talking about drawing down, what, outstanding debt in the treasurer's office?
It's an amount that's related to Lorain National Bank, amount of money that we receive for the like amount of money.
Oh, wait a minute. No, no, there's a, okay, now I understand. You got an unclaimed bond fund, right?
Correct.
Explain that to me. How does that exist? What's an unclaimed bond fund?
That's monies, Commissioner, that were, the accumulation in that fund was caused by two things, by bondholders not cashing in coupons, and there was about $1,600 of dollars that were not claimed, and also interest over the 25 years that was accrued on the money that Lorain National Bank held, of the county's money. The agent for the county was Lorain National Bank. They held our money as we paid in every year, and they made payments to the bondholder. During that 25-year period, the county did earn interest to the tune of about $34,000, which was credited into the General Fund.
So now we have an unclaimed bond fund, but we also have unclaimed money fund? That, in other words, if somebody has overpaid their taxes and is sitting there for five years, nobody's claiming this money, then we bring it back into the General Fund. Is this kind of the same thing?
Very, very similar, Commissioner. The unclaimed bond fund is really what's called the U-Trust Funds.
Right.
It's a repository of money, of unclaimed money from people who have not cashed in their coupons.
See, that money, the unclaimed funds goes back into the General Fund. That's why I don't understand, I still don't understand, I'm sorry, but works-
This money will be recaptured into the General Fund. It's through accounting process, but it will be recaptured. When they went to close out the accounts, and I'm gonna keep my terminology very simple, for the parking deck in this building, which ended last year, because of timing of deposits and payouts, there was a net gain in interest, and it was on a daily basis. It wasn't there very long. It was parked for maybe a day or two. In addition to that, there was some bond coupon holders that, for whatever reasons, failed to ask for their money. And there's a statute time limitation when those coupons can be redeemed.
Correct.
That, after that timeframe elapses, that money now becomes, returns to the county. We are simply closing those books, returning that money to the county. I'm not a big accounting person. I don't know what measures the order that has to go to in the treasurer to account for that, but we are having a net gain of approximately $35,000 when we close that account out, correct?
That's correct, Jim.
So it's good for us.
No, we understand, we understand.
I guess just to add one more point to that, the question of whether it goes into the General Fund, I think Jim hit on that very clearly. Eventually, after Mr. Tellerick reduces his balance in his cash pool, and I'm not intricately close to that situation, eventually, as Jim said, the money will go into the General Fund after the process is done of closing this out, going to the U-Trust, and then, after X amount of years, being transferred to the General Fund. So there is a path, eventually, which will-
How long does it stay in the trust?
Make this a General Fund.
Five years, so that $35,000 sits for five years. If anybody wants it and claim it, it becomes our money.
That's correct, Commissioner. That's correct, Commissioner.
No, that's all you have to say.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I so move for approval.
I'll second.
Okay.
Takes us a while, but we get there, Mitch.
Thanks, John. It's a complicated situation. Thank you.
I understand.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Would you hand this to the clerk, I think?
I want to thank you, Commissioner. As that issue came to Mr. Ocasie and my attention late yesterday afternoon, otherwise we would have, we would have agended that item, and I appreciate your tolerance with that. At this time, I'd like to request an executive session for the express purpose of talking about the potential of purchasing real estate and for a personnel issue dealing with disciplinary action.
Real estate issues, geez, I wonder if the public knows that yet or not?
There may be more.
Oh, okay. I doubt that. Okay, thanks. Commissioners report, or do we?
No.
Oh, you're asking for like--
Can I prosecute him, Mr. Innis?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're taking the lady's call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that's what I was going to ask next, is are we asking for the executive now? Are you asking?
Well, I'm asking for it at the conclusion of our meeting.
Okay, thank you. That's what I was waiting for.
Sorry.
Sorry, Jerry.
I also need to have an executive session to discuss litigation issues.
Now we're on Commissioners' Report.
Mr. Vasey?
The only thing I have is when I was at the NACO conference, and we accepted the award from NACO, they took a picture and they sent a letter, so they finally mailed that out, and I just want to share it with you. Yeah, it's pretty ugly.
Well, I just wanted to see if you have beads on it, yes, since it was New Orleans, you know?
No, no beads.
Yeah, there we go.
I think we ought to turn around so Helen can see it.
No, Helen wants to see it.
Can you zero in on that?
It's embarrassing the Commissioner a little bit there, so.
Hey!
Boom, boom, boom. Wait a minute, let me get in on this, too. There we go. Didn't mean to scare the front row there.
Did anyone ever tell you you're a ham?
A pig, but not a ham.
Oh, I see she covered up the other one. That's a nicer picture on the top.
That's nice.
There's another one under there?
Yeah, too.
Oh! There's two different poses. Don't look at the one underneath.
No, I don't want to look at--
No, you don't. Shred it.
That's the one we need to show.
Oh, jeez. That was a happy one with my mouth wide open.
Yep, that's the one we should have shown. Anything else, Commissioner?
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay.
This is my five minutes of pain.
Well, you have more than that.
No, thanks. Who's asking you? I just wanted to give the LaGrange Lions a plug. Last night, they had their parade in 90-plus degree weather. It was really warm. In fact, though, I'm a fan of Betty Blair, we're a hot item, but they gave all the participants these nice ribbons, okay? And their festival goes through Saturday, so if anybody's interested, stop out and visit the LaGrange Lions Festival. And North Ridgeville Corn Festival's coming up. I mean, you know, I think it's even listed on Lorraine County Visitors Bureau about wonderful things to do, so. On a more serious note, there is $1.2 million remaining from the Clean Fund, Ohio Green Space Conservation Program, that's available to a three-county area, Lorraine, Medina, and here in counties. And those applications are due here to the Commissioner's office by September 6th, so if there's a governmental agency or a nonprofit that wants to partner with a governmental agency out there, we have information, and we've already had three awards that have been approved. It was Lorraine County Metro Parks for $55,000, Common Ground for $21,750, and the City of Willard for $375,000. And contrary to some information that was released at the state level, Amherst has not been approved yet, but it is on our agenda to look at when we meet. And then finally, I'd just like to put in a plug for the 4H and the fair that's coming up. The Junior Fair Auction is on Thursday, August 21st, and Jenna Jacobs, who is one of Lorraine County's State 4H ambassadors, is soliciting bids on her turkey. She said she had sent letters to you, but anyway, Jenna has been here before. She was part of our Youth Government Day, so. Here's a picture of Jenna and her turkey. Coming by turkey. So anyway, that's coming up. Thank you very much.
Nothing left to mention?
Excuse me? Oh, I did that last week.
Oh, okay.
The Alliance is meeting tomorrow, and Ron is hosting us at his Community Development Department, and we're hoping that there'll be room for everybody. Thank you.
I have none.
Old business?
I have none.
None?
New business?
None.
I have none. I move the reading be waived to the board correspondence before you even say it.
Thank you.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Cortez? If you notice number seven, could you see if there's any issues that I might have with number seven? Or do I have to? I thought that was already taken care of.
Oh.
If you could take care of that for me, I'd appreciate that. Could you take-- I was just asking if you--
I apologize for overlooking that matter. I'll resolve it very quickly.
I know, it's been 18 months, but we'll get it, we'll get it going. I appreciate it. As long as you take care of it, that's all.
We will attempt to influence--
Not attempt to--
That issue.
Okay.
It's called patient persistence, I was told.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Public comment?
Public comment?
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin, Ohio. The questions raised by Ms. Vasey about item number 21 and the social security benefits and their loss under the circumstances mentioned, I think are very interesting and important, and I hope that the further explanation of them will be available in some way, and that people will call this to the attention of their congressman, particularly perhaps Sherrod Brown, who's been known for showing concern about this kind of thing.
Thank you, Shirley. I see Dave and Bob are kind of negotiating. Okay. Good morning, Mr. Kish.
Hello. Mr. Kish, Elyria, Ohio, and part of Seven Seas. I'd like to welcome you to another episode of As Lorraine County Churns. In America, the three most important words when purchasing property are location, location, location. The Russian proverb is, don't buy the house, buy the neighborhood. And I thank you, as an Elyria resident, for buying the library in downtown Elyria, because where it was being located, as far as I'm concerned, it was next to a bar. It should never have been there in the first place. The original selection was not the right neighborhood. Following that, in the newspaper, there was an article on the, on Chestnut Ridge and Route 57. They are now going to be building, it looks like some commercial enterprises where possibly you can shop, rather than driving all the ways north of town to Cobblestone or to Midway Mall. And along that same venue, they are now possibly going to be building on Route 20, where for 12 years, they have not had permission to tap into a sewer line that runs within 100 feet of existing commercial space, and they may even have a second commercial development. This should alleviate some of the parking in Elyria problems. Possibly it'll also be, for the environmentally sensitive, this will also cut down on the ozone levels, and for the people worried about fuel, people who live to the south of 20 and through this area, south of town, they'll also be cutting down on fuel, preserving our reserves, if we're concerned of that. As to the parking lot, I neglected to bring the picture, and I should have brought the picture. I'm wearing the shirt because when I read the article in the newspaper, it reminded me of Hawaii and a parking lot I saw there. You want to put elections board in that office. I say bulldoze every building there if you can. And if need be, put the election board down here, and when we build this justice center, there'll be room to move them into other quarters. We got Mr. Twining out of the hole. So if you would build a building and landscape it, as some of the parking lots are in Hawaii, with trees and grass and what have you in front of it, and on three sides of it to the south side, the north side could be reserved for the buses, between them and a railroad track, and on top, you can have an additional park in downtown Elyria above it.
If you stick around till after executive session, maybe we'll talk a little bit more about that.
Okay. But, yeah, you can have something beautiful instead of just one item. Parking lot with-- there are better ways to build parking lots.
Just stick around.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Thanks for your kind words on our purchase. I gotta take that if you can. Come on, Dave.
We'll force the trends, haven't we?
No, no, I'm not taking credit for--
Good morning, Commissioners. David Ashenhurst of Oberlin. I haven't been here in several weeks.
We noticed you've changed your appearance. I'm sorry.
I have, as a Commissioner, for whom such would be a similar adornment.
Adornment?
Well, I'm saying--
Thank you. I don't usually get them.
It's an adornment on one gender and not on another, so. And I'm pleased to see the Commissioner, for whom it is an adornment, is so adorned.
He's off the red.
Yeah, so, well, I already spoke to him about it.
He's going to forget what he wants to say.
No, I feel like Dave probably wants to talk about something serious.
No, well, I have something serious, but also some pleasantries. I have been absent, but happy to find on my return such amicable discussions of annexation. Compliments to Commissioner Blair on her broad-mindedness in driving people home who got their cars towed, even though she didn't agree with them on a matter of policy. Compliments to Commissioner Vasey on a good explanation, I thought, of the annexation law changes in her column in the Senior Citizen News. I thought that was a good place to have that, and to all of you on putting those rules on the website, I think that's a good idea. And also to Commissioner Blair for mentioning the Clean Fund Ohio thing again. I appreciate that. One, one real suggestion, and that is actually about the reading of the correspondence that was just waived. Number eight in that correspondence, it seems to me, should either be the subject of a resolution or should be read out loud. Most of the time, correspondence just is from agencies that aren't a part of the county to the Commissioners or something like that, but it seems to me that to make some note in the journal that the Commissioners have received the People's Annual Financial Report on the whole county and its operations, so that that can be sort of a point of real, well, as they say, just acceptance, and then, so any subsequent reference to that will reflect that it actually came through here and not just as a matter of correspondence, but, you know, a report to the Commissioners in that way, it seems to me would be, would be a good idea. I think that's it. I also agree with Mrs. Johnson's comment about, about this question of social security benefits for people who have not been convicted of anything and who might just be there on a very temporary basis, and having their social security benefits disrupted for, you know, for their detainment in a jail, not even their incarceration or their, their commitment to a secure facility. I think that should be brought up to question, and I'm going to put in a, I'd like to see that resolution back in 1998 as we talk about that further, so I appreciate the Commissioners' look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other comments?
I have one public safety announcement to make. This has to do with, I went to the Lorraine Port Authority shindig last week here, and I walked out on that mile pier, and I noticed a little boy fishing there, and he had his rod laying right at the very edge of the pier fishing. If that rod were to fall in there and he lunged for it, he could fall in and drown. While I was in Hawaii, at fishing piers such as that, they had holes bored into the rock so that you could hold your rod safety and the fish wouldn't pull it in. I'm proposing, and I'd like to drill you on this one, so to speak, because this gentleman on this card, I spoke with him, and he is willing to donate his time and effort to drill four holes into that concrete pier for fishing rod holders. Now, I don't know who or who I'd see or where I'd go, but this is at no cost to the government of Lorraine County.
Bob, I can direct you to the, to the proper authorities after the meeting on that issue. It doesn't lie with us, but I can tell you who to see.
Thank you.
That's good.
Thanks, Bob.
Well, basically, that's it. I'd like to be able to--
I'm sure Jim could help you, so I appreciate it.
The other thing, they go one step further. If you want to draw tourists, and you want to draw people to Lorraine, and you want to have people come there, you have to give them something. And in Hawaii, not only do they have the holes bored to hold the rods, they also have chairs where people sit there, and they listen to their radios, and they also have bells on their rods so they fall asleep the fish away.
People will catch the fish for you in Hawaii, okay?
That's good.
Oh, boy. Always a pleasure, Bob. I guess we, I move for executive session.
Second. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
I move to authorize Jerry Innis to proceed with collection of Department on Loan Obligations and file a suit. On debt, on debt loan obligations, I'm sorry. Can't read my own writing.
One second. Discussion?
Is that sufficient?
For what you need?
Ms. Vasey? Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Are you frank?
Do we make a motion to adjourn?
No.
I'm just wanting, everyone's--
Oh.
After this long--
You've been doing all this time, and now you're going to adjourn? No!
If you would, we can turn the issue over to Jerry, and he'll request a resolution on the property.
Are you giving it to me? Okay, well.
On the property?
Okay, why don't we do this? We're looking at the discussion or the purchase of the property next to Fifth Third and the Transportation Center, so, there you go, Jerry.
It's my understanding that the county made an offer to purchase real estate from the Elyria Public Library. The Elyria Public Library voted the other night to accept that offer, except they added a few conditions to that regarding some leases. So it's my further understanding that Commissioners are now prepared to accept that counteroffer, except we need to add some language to our acceptance of the counteroffer. So that would be, and we'll need a motion that the Commissioners accept the purchase counteroffer the Elyria Public Library provided, that the library invoke item 14 in the lease agreement with Ohio Outdoor Advertising Corp., so that the billboard lease is terminated due to the fact that the Commissioners feel a billboard advertising on property that is intended for use as the Board of Elections would be inappropriate and prohibited by law.
I'll move on that resolution.
Discussion?
Ms. Vasey? Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Is there anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Cortez?
Yes. I'd like to request permission from the board to, well, let me caveat this way. As you know, there was an article in the paper concerning the Vietnam War Memorial and their need for a location for their memorial. They're raising funds for the actual memorial itself. I would like to be granted permission from the Board of Commissioners to at least initially take a look with our engineers if we can facilitate that memorial into our intermodal hub. We have a great deal of property that we're purchasing alongside the intermodal, it may be a great way of putting a parklight setting back there with parking and have the memorial as part of that area. I think it'll bring visitors into the downtown, and I would like to have discussions and talk to the engineers about that feasibility.
Okay, I don't think we need a resolution, I think you just need the support of the Board.
You can pass a resolution of support, that shows your support for the issue.
But we would also have to negotiate if they would want it there.
Oh, absolutely, I have no idea whether that would be agreeable to them or not, but we certainly can make the offer, and plus, once we make the offer, and if they appear to be agreeable, then we have to meet with the engineers that are designing the area, and see how we can incorporate that into that area. It's a little bit more complicated, but I, I think that it's something that we should get behind and support, and I have talked to each Commissioner individually, have been supportive individually of possibly doing that. Not only will it bring people down to our intermodal if it's there, but it'll also bring people into downtown Alaria.
Put in atmosphere there, too.
Absolutely.
But do you think we're putting the cart before the horse? Maybe we should find out if they're interested in locating there?
I think that's what we're doing, we're asking him to start, to see if they are, so.
I thought I heard him say, talk to the engineer.
Well, the engineers I'm talking about are the people designing, after I speak with them, if they're, if they're interested in locating there, I will speak to the engineers designing that portion of the project.
I guess you need our blessing, I don't have a problem with you talking to the group to see if they're interested in using the property we haven't acquired yet as a possible park for the memorial.
Is that a, a motion?
That's just a form of a motion of support.
One second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Aye. Oh, sorry.
Mr. Moore?
I'm tired.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Anything else, Mr. Cordez? Look at Jerry's like leaning.
I have to go back and clarify something.
Okay, you, do you, would you like to at least make our initial announcement of what we're going to do in September, or do you want to wait? You'll be gone next week, so.
We can announce it next week, that's all right.
While you're gone?
Oh, you can announce it today, I'll let you do it.
It's, it's, you're the president of the Board. We'll wait, you're tired.
He doesn't know what he's announcing. You don't know what you're announcing. Give him that to think.
I know, I know, no, I know what he wants, why don't we let Jerry talk, he had that wrapper thing going with his hand, he was going to go.
I just wanted to explain my reluctance of introducing that issue, and I want it on record, our office represents the Alaria Library in addition to this Board, and it's in the purchase agreement that we neither negotiated or handed anything to do with either entity as far as putting together this document, other than the lang, that last little piece of language that I just read, that's the only thing we've had to do with it, and I just wanted you to understand, that's why I was reluctant to be the one-
Oh, we're sorry.
Introduce that.
Okay, on September 11th, the County Commissioners will be holding a-
Ribbon cutting?
Will be having a ribbon cutting regarding the 911 Building and EMA, and we also, more importantly, will be honoring the victims of the World Trade Center. And by having a memorial plaque put up to honor them, and in meantime, we'll be open to the public to come and participate, there'll be a band, some choirs, is my understanding, Mr. Cordez is in the process of putting it together, and we'll hopefully have some more information for the public coming soon, so.
It'll be a, the ribbon cutting ceremony, ribbon cutting ceremony will be the very last event, it'll be a celebration to being an American. It'd be a great day for everybody to come out, so we'll have a lot to follow, appreciate the Commissioners' support in this issue, and we'll, we'll get some agendas and different things together. It's going to be, it's going to be a good day.
Yep, that, and I think that's it.
I move we adjourn at 3:30, depending on which clock you look at. Second? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Vasey?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.